I'd like to call the April 14th, 2011, meeting of the Williamsburg City Council to order. Would you call the roll, please? Ms. Scott?
Ms. Nudson.
Here.
Mr. Pong.
Here.
Mayor Holman.
Here.
Mr. Friling.
Here.
Mr. Foster.
Our first order of business is the approval of minutes for the meetings of March 7th and March 10th, 2011, and budget work sessions of March 21st and March 22nd, 2011. Do I have any additions or corrections?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move the approval of the minutes of March 7th, March 10th, March 21st, and March 22nd.
I have a motion. I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please? Ms. Scott?
Ms. Nudson.
Aye.
Mr. Pong.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Mr. Friling.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Our next order of business is one of those special times for us where we have an opportunity to recognize one of our own. This is Excellence in Service to Williamsburg presentation to Human Services Clerk Elsa Corrigan. Would you please come forward, Elsa? Meet me at the microphone.
This is an award that we give to employees, and the special thing about it is it comes
from other employees. It's our city employees recognizing one of their own, and it's pretty special for us, and pretty special for you, too. I have a proclamation here to read for you, and then we have a plaque for you. I can't do more than one thing at a time, so let me put that down. This is, "City of Williamsburg takes pleasure in recognizing Elsa Corrigan for excellence in service to Williamsburg. Elsa Corrigan has served the city of Williamsburg with energy and excellence over the past three and a half years as clerk for the Department of Human Services. As a visitor's first point of contact, she is a friendly face offering a helping hand to those in the midst of difficult personal circumstances. Her interactions are both compassionate and effective. She provides a wide range of support services enabling the work of administrative, social work, and eligibility staff. She regularly uses her bilingual and translation skills to aid the police department. The Peninsula Crime Line awarded her Williamsburg's Most Outstanding Citizen last year for her assistance with cases involving Williamsburg's Hispanic and Latino community. Elsa is a highly engaged team player, an exemplary role model for the Human Services Department, and for every component of the city. She has the true heart and determined work ethic of an outstanding public servant. Elsa Corrigan is hereby recognized for her commitment to excellence in keeping with the best tradition of public service in the city of Williamsburg dated April 14th, 2011, signed by me as mayor and Jackson Tuttle as city manager. Elsa, congratulations."
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. It is definitely a great pleasure and honor to work with the city of Williamsburg and Department of Human Services. I know I wouldn't be here and this wouldn't be possible without everybody's support and trust in me. This is for my growth. Remember, we are only obstacles in our lives, and it is our responsibility to make a positive change one day at a time. Thank you.
As mayor, I get to do lots of things, and that's one of my favorite things, so congratulations. Our next order of business is background presentations and discussions. We have two today. The first is Peninsula Health District update. Dr. David Trump, the district director, come forward. Welcome, Dr. Trump.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of city council, Mr. Tuttle. I'm Dr. David Trump. I'm the director of the Peninsula Health District, which does have public health offices at 416 J. Clyde Morris Boulevard in Newport News and at 1126 Professional Drive in Williamsburg. The Peninsula Health District is part of the Virginia Department of Health, and it is the local health department for Williamsburg and also for York County, James City County, McHoson, and Newport News. Our basic operations are funded cooperatively by the state and the supported local governments. We also manage approximately $2 million in federal grant funds. Williamsburg portion of that total cooperative budget for fiscal year 2012 is proposed as $292,510, which is 4 percent of our total cooperative budget. After revenues, that net by formula is shared 60.4 percent from the state general fund and 39.6 percent by the city. The residents we serve in the city of Williamsburg represent 4 percent of the population served by the total Health District. City residents and property owners and business owners receive a range of services from the Health District. During fiscal year 2010, services for Williamsburg accounted for about 11 percent of our environmental health work. We permitted and inspected 167 restaurants and other food establishment businesses and 68 hotels in the city. We also conducted animal bite investigations for the prevention of rabies. City residents received 1.7 percent of the clinical services that are provided by the Health District. Those services include visits by predominantly low-income and uninsured patients to clinics in our Newport News location where they can receive services for family planning and sexually transmitted disease prevention. 131 Williamsburg residents received basic immunizations from us. With federal funds, we also operate WIC, the Women's, Athletes, and Children's Program of Supplemental Nutrition and Nutrition Education for pregnant and breastfeeding women and young children living in low-income families in the city. This year, the state also provided us with several thousand additional doses of the seasonal flu vaccine. We were able to provide that free of charge to residents of all the communities in the district, and between clinics and schools and community locations and through our health van, we're able to provide that throughout the district. Our Health District professionals work daily with patients, with physicians, with school health leadership, long-term care facility managers, and others to identify and control spread of communicable diseases such as whooping cough, the norovirus diarrhea, or tuberculosis. We also have a close working relationship with your fire chief and local emergency management team in order to prepare for and respond to the public health aspects of natural and man-made disasters. Currently, we are working with the Commonwealth Department of General Services to find a new location for our Williamsburg office. Greater Williamsburg, the city, James City County, and Upper York County is the one area of the Health District that has grown in population over the past 10 years. Our new location will include adequate workspace for the environmental health and WIC program staff that are currently needed to serve the nearly 100,000 residents of Greater Williamsburg. It will also include the addition of clinical spaces so that we can start providing those same residents with mandated public health services in their own community. My comments this afternoon are very brief. I just thank you for this time to highlight the activities of the Peninsula Health District, which is your local health department. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions?
I had, I noticed in the federal budget, one of the cuts they're making is to WIC. Do you have any idea what that might mean if they do it?
The information that I, we have received as far as for this current fiscal year budget, unless there are significant increases in the costs of food over the next remaining six months, that's probably not going to have a significant impact on the provision of services based on what we were provided, I was provided this morning by the state WIC program office, so.
That's good news. WIC is basically a program of the Department of Agriculture, Dr. Trump. Yeah.
Yes, it's funded by USDA. The funding we get is for the administrative part. For about every dollar that is put into the program, the nutrition education and the administration of it, it translates into about $3 or $4 of food benefit for the women who participate in their children. It also, it's not just though that, you know, that food benefit, it is really the food nutrition, monitoring of the child's health, and just making sure that in those, you know, from birth, during pregnancy, from birth through breastfeeding, through those first few years of life, that that child has the best nutrition possible.
Thank you.
Dr. Trump, thank you very much for being here, and thank you for your service to the citizens of Williamsburg and to the whole district. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Our next presentation is the Williamsburg-James City County proposed school budget. We have with us today Dr. Stephen Constantino, the new superintendent. I see he's also joined by board members, Board Chair Jim Nichols, board member Ruth Larson, city board member Elise Emanuel, and Oscar Prater. I think I've caught all the board members. I think I see Scott Burkbackler hiding back there as well. So Steve, if you'd like to come forward. Or Jim.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the city council. I want to first say thank you for being wonderful collaborators in the development of our proposed budget that we bring before you, the school board's proposed budget. What we're doing with this budget under difficult financial times, as you know, is really offering stability in our educational system, which brings stability in the lives of children, many of whom their lives are kind of not as stable at times with unemployment and the struggling economy for them. So they come to an oasis in the midst of a sea of turbulence to receive a quality education, which the city has provided to the city, to the school board through the years, and particularly in these challenging times. We've demonstrated, I think, good stewardship of our resources in ensuring that we would maintain stability, there isn't turbulence and faculty layoffs and so forth, and we're ensuring quality program and our student-teacher ratios. So I also want to introduce Dr. Constantino. This is, I think, the first time that you're appearing before the city council today, and want to say how much, at least, we appreciate his presence among us and having great conversations with him during these past few months since he's been on board since February. It's been a joyous ride, a lot of excitement, and it's been a pleasure working with him. So my appreciation on behalf of the board to him, as well as to Scott Burkbackler, who's done a phenomenal job these years to position the school division to weather this storm really very well. As I read the reports throughout the Commonwealth of Virginia and throughout the nation, we are indeed blessed to have Scott with us at the financial helm of the school division. So it's my pleasure to introduce to you Dr. Constantino, the superintendent of the school division, followed by Dr. Burkbackler.
Great. Thank you very much, Chair. Mr. Superintendent.
Council, good afternoon.
Yeah, welcome, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, thank you. I'd like to just take a minute, if I may, personally, to thank you for making me feel very welcome in the community. I'd like to go on record as saying that after two and a half months, I am still very happy to be here. I'm happy to be part of this community, and I see great potential in our school system. I want to thank those of you who have taken the time to talk with me, to help orient me to the needs of our school system and our community. I want you to know that I'm doing as much listening and processing as I can and promise to incorporate your thinking and the needs of the community as we move forward, as I prepare for my first full year and some new ideas coming down the line. Also, Mr. Mayor, want to congratulate you personally, just for, I read a little blurb about you winning the Mary Prentice Award, so congratulations on behalf of the school division and the school board.
Thank you.
I've read with interest the goals, initiatives, and outcomes document provided to me by Mr. Tuttle. I appreciate getting this information as it better informs the school division of how to proceed with regard to your goal number seven relating to the educational needs and expectations of city residents. I was pleased to see that the citizens rated their public school experience much above the national average at 78 percent. It's our goal to help both of our organizations improve the satisfaction of our public school system, thus improving our entire community. We continue to close the achievement gaps between subgroups of students, but we have work to do. We can be proud of our accomplishments. For example, we've decreased the achievement gap between African-American and Caucasian students in reading from 28 percentage points in 2006 to 13 percentage points in 2010. The success is also highlighted in your document, your GIO document. The trends are moving in the right direction, but learning gaps still remain. The budget that'll be presented to you today reflects a commitment to preserving low teacher-student ratios, small school population sizes, athletic programs, extracurricular programs. We're addressing the needs of our special student population even though stimulus monies are drying up, and we're placing additional resources in areas like reading and student assessment so that we can continue to make gains. Over the course of the next year, we'll launch an ambitious plan to create a targeted strategic plan to reach our vision of being the premier school division in Virginia. I believe that with a strategic focus, we will improve our ability to allocate funding to those areas we wish to improve. As I prepare for my first full year as your superintendent, sharing our data, our successes, and our challenges will be a cornerstone of working together to improve schools and communities. Difficult decisions lie ahead for all of us. Please know that we value the relationship with the council and pledge to work together to provide continuous improvement of our students and to do our part in supporting your efforts to make Williamsburg an attractive place to live and work. As you know, the majority of the budget work was completed before my arrival in February. At this time, I want to thank Dr. Burkbackler for his fiscal leadership, and I'm going to ask him to take you through the highlights of the budget, and certainly at his, when he's concluded, we'll take any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon.
Yeah, good afternoon, Scott. Welcome.
Welcome. PowerPoint. Somewhere to.
The number one fear of a teacher is to click that button and nothing happens.
There are hard copies, additional copies, if anybody in the audience wants that. My purpose here today is very simple, just to update you as to any adjustments I've made since the retreat, so I want to give you some updated numbers since the General Assembly completed their action, the school board made adjustments to the numbers that you originally saw again during the retreat. I do want to highlight the fact that, as you very much know, there is an increase requested of $1.4 million split between the county and city in local funding. I want to be clear as to where that funding is, where those funds derive from. There are additional state sales tax revenue that we believe the, or know that the county and the city is receiving for educational purposes, and the school division is asking for those funds to be allocated to the schools. As you know, those funds come to you, and then you allocate them as part of your overall appropriation, so just wanted to put that local request in context. Without that additional sales tax, we would be looking at a $0 increase of 0 percent. Now, in terms of the split of the city and the county, obviously, you know that's part of the contract and how that splits, and I do very much recognize this. I see here today that that percentage is a little bit different in terms of the county and the city. But again, we set an overall appropriation, and in terms of how those funds are split, that's between your, when you negotiate the contract. Under the school board proposed budget and the final General Assembly action, there is a reduction of state revenue of about $1.6 million when you compare that to this year's revenue. What is helping to fill that gap is federal revenue of $1.8 million, federal jobs fund that is being incorporated within this particular budget. So the overall revenue increase is about 1.6 million or 1.5 percent. And how that splits up in terms of the county and the city, you can see the figures up on the screen in the hard copy, and you can see the reduction in terms of state revenue in the federal dollars that were included within this particular budget proposal. This gives you a, just idea in terms of the firm percent standpoint in terms of major revenue sources of a budget, which obviously, with your gracious support, both you and the county, obviously filling the major portion of the educational funding that supports this budget proposal. As you will see, the trend which has been over the last number of years, obviously, we're about instruction and direct instruction, what happens within the particular classroom, and as a result, the late, largest chunk of our budget, or about 75 percent, is directed towards that activity, whereas administration, you will see, is in the area of 2 percent. And then needed expenditures in terms of operations, we need buildings, we need to heat them and the like, and transportation, and certainly student health is important as well as is technology. So you can see, compare kind of where we, where we spend our money. In terms of items that we spend our money, without a doubt, largest chunk is, we're very much a people business, it's about educating our kids, and obviously, with that comes the needed staff to make that happen. So you can see that in terms of overall personnel costs, you're exceeding 85 percent for those particular expenses. Just a general overview as to the major increases within this budget proposal. VRS rates are scheduled to increase for next year. As a result, we're budgeting additional $1.9 million in that area. The school board just heard a compensation study, and we're doing various, both pluses and minuses, but the net is a plus in terms of compensation issues that are suggested within the compensation study. And in terms of various staffing adjustments that we're making, we're basically budgeting for our current staff, essentially. We do have additional pre-K teacher and the like. But as Dr. Constantino had mentioned, there are a number of stimulus positions, special education stimulus positions, that are coming over to the operating budget, which are needed positions there to meet the IEP needs of our students, and therefore, we need to find a way to fund those, and that's why they're coming over to the operating budget. In terms of major decreases, we're very fortunate that we have the ability to join forces and reduce our insurances in terms of workers' comp. These are not employee benefits, but really our fleet and our building insurance and the like. Slight adjustment in terms of school allocations, which is really reflected of the fact that we're budgeting for slightly lower enrollment when you compare budget to budget, but when you compare our actual enrollment to what we're projecting next year, there's a slight increase. But anyway, it's basically a budget adjustment that we're making in terms of school allocations. And there are various base budget reductions, by which I mean that we've had various retirements and so on, and there are savings that accrue as a result of that. So the overall, those are the major highlights in terms of the pluses and minuses within the budget proposal. As had been alluded to before, this budget has a number of positive things in it. Most notably, as I said, our student-teacher ratios are maintained from what they currently are this year. As I scan the electronic articles from throughout the nation, and every morning I read in terms of major layoffs in terms of teachers and the like throughout school systems throughout this nation, so you can feel really good about that. The support that you provide to schools is certainly having an impact, and as a result, we're able to offer the excellent educational programs that we currently are, and that is not the case throughout the nation. And as a result, this is just only one reflection of the excellence that we have at our school. All of our schools are fully accredited, and just put this as a slide, just to remind you, it's through your partnership, it's through your funding that all of that is allowed to happen, so we want to thank you for that. So with that, I can take questions?
Great. Thank you very much. Really appreciate that. Do we have any, anyone have questions?
I don't have questions, but I have a couple of comments.
Okay.
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank our school board members and Superintendent Dr. Burkbackler for the great work that you all do for the school system. Mr. Pong and I both happen to have children in the Williamsburg-James City County school system, and although I can say that mine don't wake up every day absolutely looking forward to going to school, from a parent's perspective, the overall experience, level of instruction and educational environment that they're exposed to is nothing short of terrific, and I just greatly appreciate everything that you do to created that and to maintain it. I also believe that it's the school board's responsibility to set policy for the school system, and it's council's responsibility with proper due diligence to provide our share of the funding necessary to implement that policy. Yet I would be remiss if I didn't mention the singular, most often referenced concern of the citizens of Williamsburg in this latest budget cycle, and that is the dissolution of the academy for life and learning. And I'm not going to rehash that. I know the decision has been made, and we're going forward with a different approach, but what I would ask or urge you to do is keep a close eye on how the new, new program is serving the needs of the students and the families, and if it's performing the best way it possibly can, or if there are things we can do to make it even better, or even if it's not working, consider a reinstatement of something similar to the prior model, if that makes sense. I just, I've heard that over and over again from local residents, and since they won't have the opportunity to share that with you, I felt it was incumbent upon me to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul. Scott, do you have any?
I would just echo what Paul had to say. After, you know, thank you, school board, and I'm also very optimistic, having met with Dr. Constantino, that we're moving forward with a, with a strategic plan, and, you know, I like, I like looking outward with objective information and building on our strengths, so very optimistic, and I look forward to continuing to work with you.
Thank you, Scott.
Yeah, again, I think what I see coming out of the school board and administration is all very positive, and as I look at this last screen, we're fully accredited. Our school division is lots of things. When you compare us to what's happening in other markets, other destinations, other places where schools are closing and teachers are being laid off, I think we're very fortunate to have, you know, a community that's, that's behind, you know, stands behind our school division, works hard to make sure that teachers are adequately paid, underpaid, of course, but they're, you know, it's, we're doing, we're all doing the best we can, and I think it really shows when you walk into our schools and you talk to the teachers and administrations, you know, there really is a positive feel about it, and so I think, I think we're doing real good things, and congratulations to you all for, for making it happen, so thank you.
The trouble with being fourth, as everybody's already said everything, but I, too, want to thank you. We have, both my children graduated from the schools here, and I think they've just gotten better over the years. And I also especially want to thank the school board members, because I've said many things, and one of the things I've said is I'll serve on lots of board, but not on the school board, because it's too hard. So thank you for the hours and hours you all put in on the school board.
I'll echo those thanks as well, and I'd like to give a special thanks to Superintendent Constantino. I think your first few months here have set the tone that we were all hoping it would set. You've gone out of your way to meet with city council members, other members of the community. As you said, you have listened, and I think you've listened well, and we really appreciate that. I also think the communications that occurred between the school board and city council and school administration and our administration in this budget process helps to set a tone that's really important, and I can pledge to you that we will work to do all we can to ensure that communication going forward is, flows both ways and is productive for both of us. So thank you very much for what you do. That concludes our background presentations and discussions. The next order of business is public hearings, and we have two today. The first public hearing is on relocation of voting precinct boundary lines and central absentee voting location. And I believe, Chris, you're going to give us a brief overview, and then we'll.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I am. The existing precincts for the city of Williamsburg were created by the city council in 1996. The city council has received a request from the Williamsburg Electoral Board requesting that the boundary lines for the two precincts be altered. The reason for doing this is that the Code of Virginia prohibits more than 5,000 registered voters in one precinct. Currently, the Stryker Precinct, which is, which is in the red on this map, and I can't make the little. Okay, all right, there it goes. So this is the Stryker Precinct as it exists right now, and the other precinct is the Berkeley Precinct, which is this area here. The Virginia General Assembly, however- The Virginia General Assembly, however, also passed amendment to the state code in 2008, which prohibited localities from amending these boundary lines until after May the 15th of this year. And so we're currently over by more than 1,000 people in the Stryker district, and we're under in the Berkeley precinct, and so the Electoral Board would like to adjust the precinct boundaries to make those two precincts more balanced. And so the proposed precinct boundaries that were received from the Electoral Board look like this. So this section of the city, up Richmond Road, was in the Berkeley precinct, and if city council passes the adjustment to the boundaries, that will be moved into the Stryker precinct. This is Monticello Avenue and Jamestown Road and South Henry Street. So essentially, everything to the west of that area would be in the Berkeley precinct, and everything to the east would be in the Stryker precinct, and that's going to cover most of the downtown area along Jamestown Road. The other request from the Electoral Board was that the absentee polling place be changed from the Stryker building to the municipal building. With the changes and the addition to the municipal building, the voter registrar's office is being moved from the Stryker building to the municipal building. They administer the absentee precinct. Since no one's going to be in the Stryker building, after that change occurs, it makes sense to move that polling place to the new voter registration office in the municipal building, and so the Electoral Board has also made that request. Philip Charles from the Electoral Board is here. Lynn Sauter, who is the registrar of voters for Williamsburg, is here. And Tom Maynard, who is, was formerly on the Electoral Board and was integral in creating these maps, is also here, and they can answer any questions. I also asked Teve Lyman to create a map showing the existing precinct and polling places for the city if this plan is adopted. So the community building is the Stryker polling place, which is right there, and the central absentee polling place would change to the municipal building, and the Williamsburg United Methodist Church is the polling place for the Berkeley district.
Great. Thank you very much, Chris. Before I open the public hearing, I'll see if council has any questions at this point. Okay. If not, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. This is an opportunity for anyone who wishes to speak to this issue to come forward. Yes, please. If you, please come forward, and if you state your name and address, then...
I'm Monty Johns. I reside at 122 Drew Road, Williamsburg, Virginia. I'm here not to question the need to change the boundaries of the precincts. I understand how population shifts, especially every 10 years, influences that process. I did see a reference to the Voting Rights Act, Section 5. Is this an appropriate venue to mention that, since that is, okay? That is a very historic legislation. It's basically empowering. And I couldn't find anyone that was aware of a desire by the local government to remove itself from the preclearance order specifically with Section 5. I did do some research, and I found that there's considerable debate among legal scholars about the necessity, because things have changed. I would like to encourage the city council, if you haven't already, to engage members of the minority community, just for frank discussion and dialogue, to see if there are any concerns about this in view of the history of this legislation. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to speak? With that, I'll close the public hearing and come back to council for any questions or comments.
I don't know to whom I should address the question, so I'll just put it out for anyone to respond to. The limit is 5,000?
That's correct.
We're pretty close.
We're pretty close with the change.
Right, on both.
That's correct.
So we just wait till the next census, and then at that point, we possibly have to go to three districts?
There is a process by which the registrar of voters can essentially purge people who no longer live in the city of Williamsburg or are no longer registered to vote in Virginia from those records. And I think it's probably likely, and Lynn can speak to this if she wants, that there are a lot of people who are in those numbers who no longer live here. As I understand from the census numbers, the entire population of the city has gone up about 2,000 people in 10 years. So I think it's likely that these lines as proposed can probably remain in effect without violating that limitation for several years.
And we, Ms. Sauter, could you possibly come to the podium? My question then would be, assuming there's a fair number, I don't know what that number is, of older names on the list that aren't actively voting or residing in the city anymore, how do we know if we go through this process, we don't end up with significantly imbalanced districts? Would we have looked at that in advance, or is that just not feasible?
Well, the state does what's called a purge error every so many years, and what we do is a confirmation mailing, where we send to everyone where we've gotten their mail returned to us, then we send a confirmation mailing. And they will send us back a letter that will check their correct address, whether they live here, or they live in another state or another county. And that's basically how we work it out. There are times when the state does not have money to do this process. We did one last year, and hopefully we'll do one again this year. So that's basically how it works. And then the other thing, the other thing that the code would state is that as long as we don't have more than 4,000 people voting in a presidential election, we're okay. And we've not had 4,000 people voting in a precinct at a presidential election yet. So I think we should be okay.
And to expand on what Ms. Sauter said, we're already, we're already in the position where we have really unbalanced precincts, and the state code, as of May the 16th, we're not going to be in compliance with the state code any longer, so we need to do something.
Could you give me an idea of how many did have vote in recent presidential election?
I didn't bring that with me. It's in my office.
That's okay. I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
And Stryker, it was 3,000 and some, and then in Berkeley, it was way under.
Okay. Thank you.
Scott?
I'd just kind of echo Paul's ideas. I know when I was knocking on doors last spring, it was fairly often you would roll through the, you know, see an address and knock, and it would have someone with the wrong name or, you know, no longer lived there, any number of situations. Has it been any thought given to the ebb and flow of the number of student registered voters? Because those people kind of matriculate.
Well, this year, we're going to have a really good opportunity to track down a lot of the students and whether they're here or not, because we will be mailing to the whole city since we're moving our precinct lines and so forth. And then when we get the mail back from the students who are no longer here, we will put those folks in for a confirmation mailing, and they will eventually get the letter from the state that asks, you know, what is your real address? Are you still in Williamsburg, or do you live somewhere else? And the post office helps us with that, because often they have addresses where they can forward mail that we don't have.
Good deal.
Thank you.
No questions?
I have a couple of things. Thank you, Lynn. Me too. One, I was delighted to see that the mayor sent a letter to the governor. The fact that we are in two, three senatorial districts in the new redistricting they've done in Richmond is ridiculous. I mean, it's just ridiculous, and I hope everybody saw it was, there's been some publicity about the letter the mayor sent, and I think that's really important. The other thing is the names of the two precincts, and I don't know who has any authority to do anything about this, but they're named Berkeley and Stryker because people used to vote at Berkeley School, and they used to vote in the Stryker building. That's why they're named Berkeley and Stryker. And there's a lot of confusion. Number one, there's a Berkeley precinct in James City County, and I know, I've talked to people who have run into this problem. They think they're voting in Berkeley, and they're not in the right place. So I would like to propose that whoever is in charge of this, look at maybe changing the names while we're doing this. It could be east and west. I mean, from what Ms. Shelton said, they're kind of east and west. They could be, one of them could be colonial. I mean, there are lots of different things they could be. But I think that what, one of the things you want to do, if you want to make sure that people vote, is make it easy for them to find the place that they're voting. And when it was Berkeley and Stryker, it was easy to find where you were voting. This, especially the Berkeley, makes it very difficult to find where you're going to vote. And if you believe, as I do, that voting is a privilege and that we need to work as hard as we can to make sure everybody votes, I think we need to do something about making it easier and more convenient and more logical. So that's, as I say, I don't know who, I don't know if we can do that as part of the redistricting. I don't know.
Well, it is city council's determination.
Oh, it is.
It's part of the ordinance. If city council wants to change the names of the precincts, they certainly can do that. I would not suggest doing it today, because this change, if council passes it, will need to go to the Department of Justice for preclearance, and has been advertised as city council sees it. So any changes to that may raise questions for the Department of Justice at this stage.
Okay.
But it's certainly something that council could consider doing in the future, perhaps in discussion with the Electoral Board.
Yeah, I, you know, I think we need a lot of people talking about this. I don't think council ought to just do it, but especially the electrical board, and the voter registrar, people like that. But I do think it's something we ought to think about and put on a future agenda somewhere.
Great, thanks.
Just a follow-up if I could, I'm sorry. The point that Judy's made about the senate districts in the state has nothing to do with what we're talking about today. Totally independent.
Yes.
But the fact that they use the old lines instead of, you know, the new ones.
I guess I have several questions, and one that may go to the Electoral Board about the process of coming up with these. And Mr. Maynard, you may be the appropriate one, or Ms. Sauter, I don't know who would be appropriate to answer this, but could you give us a little background of the discussions you had, the communication you had with the community as you worked toward these proposed changes? And again, whoever is most appropriate to speak to.
Thanks. I think the issues you're bringing up basically demonstrate why we had to do it. We were under the Department of Justice guidelines. We had to come up with a number that balanced. Stryker was heavily loaded, and Berkeley was underloaded. So we tried to balance. We came up with a balance of about 4,500 for Berkeley and 4,700, is that about the number? For Berkeley. So we were just within 200 of each, so we really balanced it. And the locations, we couldn't see why people in Skipp with farms should go all the way down to Route 5 to vote if we could make it more central. So that was one of the considerations and the reason we broke it off at Monticello. The other thing is, we know that we've got numbers that will be coming. We'll be increasing in numbers for a variety of reasons. But if we don't exceed the 4,000 in each district, which was very unlikely for many years, we figure 10 or 15 years, or even longer before we reach that number. So we're in good shape, and we balanced it so that we didn't have any blocks. We've got a real mixture of Williamsburg in a number of ways.
So the 4,000 you referred to as the 4,000 voting in any precinct in a presidential election?
In a presidential election.
Rather than the 5,000. So it's an either-or?
They both apply.
They both apply?
That's a federal requirement, and the 5,000 limitation is a state requirement.
Got you. Okay, I understand.
The other, the other thing is Judy's point about the names. We have had that problem over a number of years, and if in our wisdom we decide to change the names in some directions that make sense for Williamsburg, then I think that would be a wise, a wise direction. I want to just say one other thing. The people of Williamsburg United Methodist Church, we use the community building for the Stryker district, but the people of Williamsburg United Methodist Church, Bill Hill and their trustees have done a really generous gesture to the community of Williamsburg. They are very appropriately located, people up and down Jamestown Road into Griffin and Newport Avenue and Indian Springs Road. All of those communities can walk there, and they have adequate parking. So they have made a generous gift to the city of Williamsburg in offering their location as a precinct. We don't have to call it Williamsburg United Methodist precinct, but we do, we do need to express our appreciation.
Thanks. I guess I have one other question. In light of the earlier question, what role did the Voting Rights Act play and the issues associated with that play in your discussion, your communication with the community as you, as you develop these proposals? And I don't know who's most appropriate to speak to that.
We really, that, except for fulfilling what we had to do in terms of filing the appropriate papers for the new boundaries, there was no other consideration. We thought we had a fairly good balance across the area, so there were no political, if that's the question, there were no political considerations at all because we didn't see any.
And if you look at predominantly African-American hearts of the community, were they moved from one district to another, or they stayed in the same district?
Right where they've been, and in fact, we didn't even, that question didn't even come up.
Didn't even come up, okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, one of the terms that have been bandied around lately is community of interest and discussion about keeping communities of interest together, but the city elects members of city council and other officials as an entire city. So while that really is a consideration when you're looking at districts on a state and federal level, it's not as much of a concern in our local precinct boundaries because the city votes as an entire city.
Yeah, okay. So the district boundaries really are a really administrative district rather than...
Where you vote.
Yeah, so...
And in this case, the two polling places are within a mile of one another, and so those are the types of things that the Department of Justice is going to look at in the preclearance process.
Got you. Okay. Thank you. That's very helpful. Does anybody else have any additional questions at this point? With that, I'll come back to this council for any discussion or action.
I'm torn on this. Not on this, but on connection, or not lack of connection, but the coincidental timing of this issue and the state redistricting that's happening. And again, thank you for your letter on behalf of the city. In the limited time that I've served on council, there've been a couple of disappointing things that have come down the road and we've had to deal with. The prospect of dividing the city of Williamsburg between or among senatorial districts, to me, is probably the most disappointing of those that I can recall, and it's also frustrating because it seems as though we have absolutely no control or input on it. And I wrote down a number of descriptive words that came to my mind as I was thinking about how I would portray this, and I'm choosing not to use any of them, because I just don't think that would be appropriate. And I realize that it's just, that it's, nothing's finally yet, these are proposals. But what probably disappoints me even more than the proposal is that there has not been equal outrage or equal response from the sitting senators who would currently represent us and could potentially represent us. And a response that I didn't create the map is not adequate. It has nothing to do with it. You're either agreeing with the process or you're not. Who created the map is immaterial. And I just, I know it isn't related to this, but in some people's minds it is, so I just feel better saying that. Thank you for indulging me.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move the approval of ordinance 11-07.
Second.
I'm sorry, you also need to authorize the city attorney to file the preclearance application as part of that.
So the motion before us is that city council adopt... So, the motion before us is that city council adopt proposed ordinance 11-07 and authorize the city attorney to file the necessary documents to obtain preclearance from the Department of Justice under Section 5 of the Voting Rights Act of 1965.
Yes.
I have a motion, I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Jensen.
Aye.
Mr. Potts.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Mr. Frye.
Aye.
Mr. Parkton.
Great. Thank you. And thank you from the board. If you'd like to say something, please do.
Mr. Mayor, just one more. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Ted Lyman of IT Department of City of Williamsburg for his enormous assistance in helping us adjust this. He took the figures that we gave him and the addresses and everything else and came up with the map you see. And we were able to balance things out because of the enormous help that he provided. And I simply, we're recognizing city employees. That's one that ought to be recognized for his assistance.
Well, thank you and thank the electoral board, and thank you, Ms. Sowers, for your work on this. And Chris, thank you very much for your work on this. Our next public hearing is the budget, public hearing for budget adoption scheduled for May 12 meeting. Mr. Tuttle?
Yes. The state has a requirement for all localities in the same manner to, as part of their budget process, to have a formal budget hearing. And so, a proposed budget was published in the newspaper several weeks ago that outlined the revenues and expenditures in four funds of the city and also proposed taxes. So, the city council held its budget work sessions on May 20, on March 20 and March 21. So, we're down to the, that public hearing on the proposed budget. As advertised, the budget showed a 2.2% increase to $31.87 million in the general fund, also a capital improvement fund of $5.09 million, and a public assistance fund of $5.05 million. The no change in tax rates in the city, property tax or otherwise. Finally, in the utility fund, a proposed budget of $6.87 million with, which is actually a 2.3% decrease in the utility fund budget. So, that's one item for the public hearing. The second item deals with the water rates, and that needs to be, also has a requirement for public hearing, although these are two are being done simultaneously. And I thought it would be wise to say a few words about that because it is the one change that affects what our citizens would be paying. The recommendation is for a water rate increase from $4.20 to $4.30 per 1,000 gallons. That's a 2.5% increase. The reason for the increase, you just heard me say that the utility fund operating expenditures have actually proposed to go down slightly. But the waterfront increase is for, according to the city's five-year water rate analysis, and it's required in this year and we foresee in coming years increases required to pay for the long-term supplemental supply agreement, which we have with the city of Newport News, and also to pay for capital expenditures that will be coming in future years primarily for the control of inflow and infiltration into the sanitary sewer system from the storm, from stormwater, which is necessary to further protect the bay. I'd add that on the operating side, we have two frozen positions in the water system. We're doing everything we can to hold down operating expenses. As you can see, in fact, the operating budget is decreasing. The good news is that the dollar, $4.30 is still substantially under any other water and sewer provider in Hampton Roads. So, that's, that's good, but it still is an increase of 2.5%. So, with that as background, we're ready for the public hearing.
Great, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Tuttle before the, open the public hearing?
Jack, I'm sorry. I do, could you talk a little bit about, or maybe say it a little slower for slow people like me, the, the cost of operating that the water has declined?
The operating costs in terms of actually operating the plant which produces the water, distributing the system, the water, and as well as the sewer system, the operating costs, the people there doing the job. Where Mr. Clayton's been working very hard to hold those costs down and look for savings anywhere we can get them. So, for instance, a couple of years of not having any pay raises, of course, benefits us in that area as well.
And so, the increase that you're, that you're seeking is, is really looking into the future of what, what expenses may be?
It's, it's, it's the current cost of the long-term water supply agreement, which we, which is in the budget, and, and future capital costs that are required. And I was making a distinction between that, the debt service, and, and capital costs as opposed to the operating expenditures. So, it's not our operating costs that are driving this increase. It's those other things.
Right. And do we, do we have a budget of those, those future, other than the purchase from, from Newport News, operating expenditures?
Yes, we have both a five-year capital improvement plan and a single-year budget that, and those numbers for the next year are in your utility budget that was published.
And that five-year capital improvement budget includes anticipating the stormwater expenses that are coming down the line. We know, we know they're coming and so...
Actually, these costs are for sanitary sewer improvement, improvements as opposed to stormwater improvements.
Stormwater, okay, so, okay.
So, there are two of them going on. Yes, sir.
Two different things, okay. Thanks.
So, this, if I'm hearing this correctly, this move would be part of an incremental increase over time?
Yes. We expect that the five-year rate analysis right now projects increases in the range of 5% in future years. But we look at it every year and see whatever we can do to, to hold that down. And I'll say, in this case, while we're, the reason we're at 2.5% rather than something higher than that is because of the refunding that was done last fall on the, on the Newport News extended supplemental water deal.
You mean refinancing?
Yeah. The refinancing, yeah. What did I say?
Refunding.
Yeah. Well, we refunded the bonds. Yeah, that's, both terms are okay.
Okay. Any, any other questions before I open the public hearing? And this is a public hearing both on the operating and capital budgets for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2011, and the proposed water rate of $4.30 per 1,000 gallons. I have one speaker's card, Donald Baker. If you'd like to come forward, please state your name and address.
Good afternoon.
Sorry. I was just reminded I didn't formally open the public hearing. The public hearing is open, and we have a speaker's card, Mr. Baker. Sorry to...
No worries. Don Baker, 107 Form B, Williamsburg slash Jame City County. Good afternoon, Mayor Holman, members of city council, and Mr. Tuttle. I am vice chair of the Williamsburg Land Conservancy's Board of Directors, and it's my privilege today to speak on behalf of that organization. First, the conservancy offers its congratulations to the mayor on his receipt of the prenus award from the college.
Thank you.
The conservancy is now in its 21st year. During the previous two decades, we have demonstrated our ongoing commitment to protecting and preserving significant natural scenic, agricultural, and historic land throughout the region. Since our founding as a Historic Rivers Land Conservancy in 1990, our organization has accepted the legal responsibility for the permanent protection of 28 parcels, now totaling over 3,300 acres in the region. To steward this much open space and to continue our work with landowners to protect even more land, the conservancy relies on support from individuals, businesses, and our local governments as partners in preservation. We most sincerely appreciate the past support we have received from the city. This funding from the city of Williamsburg is one of our organization's key inputs and is critical for our ability to carry out our mission. In view of our continuing needs, we respectfully ask that you consider in 2012, certainly a difficult year, and future years, an increase in our funding back to the 2009 level. The conservancy has had a long and productive land protection partnership with the city. A wonderful example is the collaborative effort between our organization, the city, Colonial Williamsburg, to ensure the important view shed along Route 132. That, that became unaffected because of the proposed subdivision on the Mahone property located on Capital Landing Road. The conservancy assisted in identifying areas where development impacts could have had a large negative effect. Our efforts extended to participation in planning commission meetings, working with the city planning staff, and the landowner. And these collaborative efforts led to a revision of the applicant's plan for development and the potential preservation of one-third of this 28-acre project. The protection of green space and other important lands within our community is critical to those who live, work, or simply visit our community for a time. According to the Chambers 2008 Visitor Survey, when asked to describe what they liked most about their trip, a large percentage of visitors surveyed praised the scenery of our area. You need to look no further than along the Route 132 entry corridor between Route 143 and Route 60, which is located within and adjacent to the city, to see the results of the conservancy's work. This seven-tenths of a mile with easements on both sides of the road provides a welcome of natural beauty for our visitors and makes them feel like they want to return again and again, we hope. This landscape will remain unchanged forever as a result of our partnership efforts. The conservancy is the only private land trust in our region that is dedicated solely to conserving and stewarding our land resources for future generations. Few people truly understand where jurisdictional boundaries begin and end, as well as voting precincts. And that's why our relationships with local governments and historic triangle are so critical and why our work across the region has a collective impact and benefit. When residents and visitors traverse our historic and entry scenic corridors, Route 5, Route 199, Jamestown Road, or Route 132 into the Colonial area, the conservancy's work to protect our watersheds, view sheds, which provide the character and ambience of this unique community is obvious. It is aesthetic amenities such as these that keep us from becoming Someplace USA or just another exit off the interstate. Be assured that the conservancy is continuing its efforts to preserve and protect more land in our region. We thank you for your continued support and for your thoughtful decision on this budget request in this year and in future years that will impact generations far into the future. Thank you.
Mr. Baker, thank you very much. And I hope you'll convey our thanks to your fellow board members for their good work for the community and to your director, Karen Schumacher, for her, her wonderful work. And thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak to the operating and capital budgets or to the water rate proposed? If not, I'll close the public hearing and come back to council for any discussion. Yes, I'd like to begin a discussion of, about economic development. We've, Jack, could you talk to us a little bit about sort of what is in the budget for economic development and the way you look at that and...
Sure. Well, first of all, the, we fund an economic development department who is a one-person department plus a good deal of support from others in the city. That, of course, is our economic development director, Michelle DeWitt, who also works closely with our Economic Development Authority to spearhead efforts in the city. The authority has, at its disposal, funds that it has developed, have raised over the years from doing bond issues, that it gives it a certain level of funding, and it can spend that down until, it's one-time funding though, and then it can spend it. So, that's one source of dollars, and they use those very widely, I think. In addition to that, in Michelle DeWitt's budget, there is a $50,000 contingency or line item for economic development purposes that can be used to fund some of the projects such as, such as the sign replacement grant program, our demolition assistance program to, to remove high-sore properties and to assist in redevelopment. So, that's what's available in the budget. In addition to that, there have been occasions where the city council has determined that additional effort is needed sometimes to a much greater extent. For instance, when the city council decided to purchase the Tioga Motel, that purchase was around $1 million. You put that into your capital budget, but that was a decision that the council made, even though it's very much the EDA and, and the economic development director's job to kind of work that issue now. And we do have some additional contingent, general contingency money in the budget on the operating side, as well as on the capital side with council's approval that could be used if there are opportunities that come to, either through the EDA or through Michelle DeWitt. So, that's how we're structured right now.
Yeah. This is a question for council maybe to discuss, but it seems to me that in, in our statement of goals and objectives, we've highlighted economic development in a way going into the future, maybe more prominent than, than we had in the past. And I'm wondering what, and I think we've got a terrific EDA that's been very active and very creative in, you know, in helping that process. And I think right now is, you know, an opportune time to focus resources that direction. And I guess my question is, what are some ways we could do that? And I don't know whether other council members have thoughts on that. Paul, you work with the EDA, so you may have thought about this as well.
I have. But you seem particularly anxious.
It might be worthwhile pointing out the, how the EDA, the EDA's been funded a certain way up until this point, and how those funds have been allocated has changed due to competition for issuing bonds, correct?
Right.
That, that may be worth public understanding.
Yeah. Who, I don't know whether Michelle, you or Jack, would be best to talk about. The question was about the, the change in competitiveness for, I mean, the source of funds to the EDA to this point has been their ability to issue bonds for certain types of development. But there's been a change in that competitive environment, and maybe a discussion of that would be helpful.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. The, historically, as Mr. Tuttle said, the EDA has received its revenue from being a conduit for the placement of tax-exempt bond issuances. In the city of Williamsburg, that's been for nonprofits. In other localities, they can also do this for industrial and manufacturing activities, but we don't have those activities. And starting in 2003, the General Assembly gave permission to its Virginia Small Business Financing Authority to also issue these bonds. And bond council, many bond councils have told us they prefer to work with a Richmond agency. They don't have to travel down to the locality. It seems to be a matter of convenience, and sometimes it's a matter of a lower cost that they take those bond issuances to Richmond instead of the local EDAs. Our local EDA has matched the state's fees because we didn't want to lose any business. We haven't lost any business to the state, but there is the fear that that could happen when a nonprofit in this area needs to issue bonds. They could now go to the state. Having said all that, y'all requested that Delegate Barlow and Senator Norman introduce legislation to try to correct this competition because the nonprofits are located here locally and... and that's been something that local EDAs have relied on, in our case, almost 100% for the revenue to come from those bond issuances. So we're working with Senator Norman's help to negotiate a revenue-sharing deal with the state if we ever do lose one of these financings to the state, but that's not been accomplished yet. Does that explain it?
Mr. DeWitt, if you could just elaborate on one other point, there's also the question about if the state is issuing the bond, a public hearing is held where?
Currently, the public hearing is held in Richmond.
And if it's the local EDA that's working with the bond issuance, then the public hearing is held?
It's held locally, both by the EDA and both by you as city council.
So what we effectively have is a removal of the public forum in which these issues are discussed from the locality to another location for the expedience of the attorney to the detriment of the citizens in the community. Nothing against attorneys. So it's multiple levels why this is frustrating.
And if I may also add, about 15 other local economic development authorities are with us in these negotiations. So we have, as well as VML and VACO, they realize this is a huge fiscal impact to economic development efforts at the local level, so we're not alone on this.
Okay, great. Thank you. Does that answer your question? Paul, did you hear?
Just to, maybe to build on your point, Mr. Mayor, the EDA does have some money to carry forward, but we also have some very good programs that I'd like to think we all support, at least we've been supportive of them in the past. One in particular, Mr. Tuttle mentioned, is the demolition fund. I think we have about $5,000 undesignated currently in the demolition fund, and we have a project just down the street here that I think is very important to the city, to the entire community, that would require, or where they're requesting demolition funds for two parcels, which would be a total of $40,000. We have the Arts District Study potentially coming down the pike, which could be in the 20 to, well, $40,000 range. We're trying to get funding partners to help with that. We may or may not be successful in that regard, so that could be another significant amount of money. Even if we do get the funding partners, we'd still be looking at $15,000 to $20,000 coming from the EDA. There's a Business Brands Study that was recommended by the Economic Diversity Task Force, and we're currently working to partner with James City in York on that, so there are additional costs there. We have the e-commerce grant, which that is more of, that and the SIGN grant are hard to predict exactly how much and when the requests are going to come through because it has to do with when the time is right for a particular business. And I think what would be helpful to the EDA, from the discussions that I've sat in on, is some sense of what money they have to work with to cover these basic programs. And then there's also the, some general administrative costs, the yearly audit, legal fees, the Business Roundtable, Business Appreciation Award, and such. So the sense I've heard from the EDAs, they appreciate the city's support, they appreciate Mr. Tuttle's support, they understand that the city will work with them on projects, but they feel as though it hinders them a little bit not to have knowledge going into the year about what they're going to be able to accomplish, because at the current pace, they'll probably run out of funds before we're halfway through the fiscal year. And then to come back repeatedly for some of these smaller items creates more work on everybody's part. So I think that reflects their fears.
Well, in that, Paul, it would seem logical that they had a pool of money that they could dip into, a commitment from council that they can bank on, so to speak, because otherwise, how would you, if they came back after their money ran out, they would have to come to the city manager, and he would have to find those funds somewhere within the budget, taking those monies from, or reallocating those funds and maybe causing a problem then. So maybe the answer or the solution is to find some money in advance of them running out?
I would agree with that. I think that the Economic Development Authority and Michelle have been doing a wonderful job. You look in the city manager's report about the number of new businesses and that kind of thing. And I think you're right. I think having a pool of money would be a good idea. In addition to that, I thought the point Mr. Baker made about how the place looks, and that contributes to people wanting to locate here because it's a good place to be. And I think we really should consider adding a little bit of money to the Conservancy. Like so many nonprofits, I know they're having a really bad time, but I think they're really important to our area, and what they do is the work on the Mahone property alone, I think. So I'd just like to throw that in.
Two things there. I guess I talked to, right now, Mr. Shaw, as I understand it, Jack, we have a $50,000 contingency for economic development.
Specifically for economic development.
Specifically for economic development. And Michelle and the EDA essentially see that as their funding. Is that, that's my?
Well, for what we'll call the project funding.
Yeah, right. Yeah, right.
Which, to this point, we've just barely made it. In other words, it's been sufficient, but we could come a time, such as in the cases you've mentioned, where we would burn through that quicker.
Quickly, yes. I mean, in part, I think the EDA has just done a terrific job, and I'd also like to send them a signal that we really like what they're doing. And I'm wondering if increasing the size of that contingency, say, from $50,000 to $100,000, might be a way to go. The other option would be to create a direct line for that, and again, I'm not sure which is the best way to go. Although I think if they know that that larger contingency is there for their needs, it's not a cumbersome process to access it. But again, I'll go to council to see what thoughts you have about sort of ways to think about.
Couple of thoughts I will share. First of all, I regularly try to reinforce with the EDA council's confidence in the group and in the work they've undertaken. So I think they understand that. And I agree with your point that it does send an additional signal of council's confidence, continuing confidence in them and what they're doing going forward. And I think that's important when we have people who are working very hard, who are all volunteers, and they spend a lot of time and a lot of effort and give a lot of great thought to some vexing issue. The other thing I think it's worth noting, and you alluded to this, Mr. Mayor, is the timing. I think the timing is right for the city to invest even more in economic development because, as Mr. Foster pointed out in our retreat, you have to fertilize the field before it rains if you want the crops to grow. And I think this is a chance to do that and to continue to stay a little bit ahead of the curve in what we're hoping for is a continual recovery.
If I could, one of the things that I don't think we mentioned when we talk about economic development, I think the city spends $1.9 million for tourism promotion, whatever that may mean. And I think we ought to consider that as economic development. And in that, I think it's incumbent upon us to try to make sure, we talk about tourism being our economic engine. I think it's within that lies the greatest opportunity to find economic development and real growth in our budget and our economy. And so additional funding to the EDA so that they could be an additional catalyst to develop the tourism economy would go a long way. And so whether that means a shift in money there, but I think that may be an opportunity to look at, you know, engaging that Economic Development Authority and the director in, you know, issues surrounding tourism.
And just if I may to build on that point, the EDA is working in, I guess, conjunction with, to some degree, the Chambers efforts to create September's Arts Month, the EDA is undertaking their own efforts to build upon that. And it's not, I mean, it is tourism-related, so it's not directly working with hotels or restaurants, but they are doing more to try to help support the primary economic engine of the community.
Yeah.
Based on what I've seen the EDA do with their money in the past, I have no problem sending them a block of money that is their own and then, you know, but also potentially increasing their contingency fund. If, it's, I have a whole lot of hope in the ideas that come up with it. They're kind of like our own private think tank.
Yeah. I guess I would favor increasing the contingency rather than creating a particular line item for the EDA, because right now, we've got an EDA that's working on all cylinders and doing exactly what we want. That's not always been the case, and sometimes when you create a line, uncreating it can be difficult. So I guess I would prefer to think about increasing the size of the contingency that they have access to, and essentially, that access is very flexible. So just as a long-run sort of policy sort of position.
Got you, but my, I guess my question is, say that two projects come up next month, and they're completely out of $40,000, you know, nothing. Do we fund them another block, and that becomes their seed money to continue doing what they're doing? Or do those, do those funds have to be specifically allocated to individual projects based on when they come up? Because as it is now, they're operating with their own account, correct?
Both. They have some projects that they're pulling out of that reserve, think of it as a reserve account that they hail, that they hold from those tax-exempt bond fees.
Right, right.
They're spending that down until they can replenish it with some more. And then, but most of these other things we've talked about, they have essentially gone to the Economic Development Department and said, we need to do this project and that project. And many of these projects are really initiated by the Economic Development Department that works in conjunction with the EDA to approve a SIGN grant or to approve a demolition grant. So the EDA approves it, but it's actually city money that's going to that project out of the Economic Development Department's budget. So the two are working in tandem. Actually, that mechanism all works really just fine. I think what I'm hearing you say is you'd like to see that contingency fund enlarged so that the director has more funds readily available without coming back to the city manager and saying, I need some more money. Now, if that can be done, we just, we're going to talk a little later, Phil will show you exactly where the budget stands right now with some of the pluses and minuses we've had. And if that's the sense of what council would like to do, then we need to go back. And we're probably going to have to reassign it from something else within the budget because we don't see the revenue there to increase the revenue by that amount. But we'll take a hard look at that and bring that back to you and communicate with you prior to a budget adoption in May so you can decide what you want to do. Does that sound reasonable? Is that satisfying?
Yeah, I think the idea of increasing the contingency, Economic Development Authority contingency, and still retaining the prospect of coming back to the city manager if some great opportunity arises.
Yeah, I think that's why it's there, because we could end up with some opportunity that is well beyond that, and then you need to go, that you would have to go into your reserve funds and add a project to your capital program as you did in the case of the Tioga purchase.
Is that sufficient information for you and Phil to go with?
I think so. We'll work at it, come back with a few ideas.
Go back to sharpen your pencils. Okay, good, thanks. And any further discussion on budget issues?
Look at the Land Conservancy too, for me.
Yeah, that's good. Yeah, what, could you tell me, what was their funding in 2009?
2009, they were at $10,000, and the 2010 was $9,500. Last year, they were dropped to the current year budget. They were dropped to $5,000. They requested $10,000 again in this year. The recommendation was to hold them at 5,000. I will tell you that my concern in this is they have been close to zeroed out in James City County. So we have an unusual situation where most of the work, by far and away, and properly so, the Land Conservancy does, is in the unincorporated areas in James City County. And yet, they're not getting funding support there. But it's really, again, they're in the budget right now at 5,000 for next year, which is what they've got this year.
Thank you.
Okay, great, thanks. Any other discussion?
I'd like to, if I could, bring up, we can talk about economic development and opportunities and go back to the funding that we do for tourism promotion. We talked about it at the work session. I just want to, I still have some issue with participating and sending money to Quanah Williamsburg and the Alliance without, unconditionally. Yes, we've heard that, you know, that there's some new programming going on, and all that may be good, but I'm not sure that, in my mind, that we're seeing real goals being set to make a discernible, measurable difference to our economic engine, to our livelihood here in the city. And I just think that, I think we ought to revisit, and I don't know if it's too late, but we really ought to look at that investment in terms of what is the return on it and how to do that. This body, obviously, and me, not probably the ones that answered, but going back to, you know, money to the EDA, maybe there's, you know, third-party consultants that can come in and help look at our environment, identifying the constraints that we're under, you know, how is it that, and maybe they can help us identify how to compete externally rather than internally. And so I'd just like to see us, and I don't know the answer to it, but I just have a problem sending money, you know, good money after bad money, so to speak, because we've been on a 15-year decline with tourism here, and we haven't really heard plans to get us out of this rut.
I guess my response at this point is to say, you know, I think, thinking about that as we move forward is something, you know, I think we've done, I think we need to revisit that question continually, but I think, I'm not sure at this point in the budget cycle that that's, you know, I mean, that is a very big task and a long-run task. And I think maybe what I take from your discussion is we should put it on the agenda for an upcoming discussion about how might we proceed in going forward in setting whatever those measures are that we might want to look at and how we might think about that. But I think for the current budget, it's quite difficult, although Judy will.
Well, I think I have to disagree with Mr. Pons because I thought we had very good presentations from both Colonial Williamsburg and the Alliance showing goals, objectives, the kinds of things we're looking for. The decline in tourism is not, has not just taken place in Williamsburg, it's taken place all over the country, and it's directly associated, I think, with the economy. I mean, people simply aren't traveling. And, you know, you clearly need to position yourself so that for the people who are traveling, you're getting them. And I personally think Colonial Williamsburg has been doing a fantastic job. I was up in New York visiting my family up there, and there are all kinds of ads on television for Colonial Williamsburg, there's children's programming going on, there's all kinds of stuff. So I think, you know, you need to look at yourself in the context of what's going on in the rest of the country, and I think we're actually doing a fairly remarkable job considering what's going on everywhere. I do think that the mayor's right, we probably need to have a good, long look at this. I'm a little leery of spending money on outside consultants to come in and tell you that there's a national problem with tourism. But I do think, you know, the Alliance meetings I've been to, they've done a very good job of looking at where we are positioned in the market. So maybe next year, we should do something before the budget cycle about, you know, let's look at where we are and how we're spending our money. But I don't know that we ought to do it right now.
Well, I don't know that we should do it now either, but I'll disagree with you, Judy. I think Williamsburg has suffered longer than, and harder than many destinations, and many destinations have rebounded quickly, more quickly than we have. We haven't rebounded. You know, you look at what the events of 2011, you know, Williamsburg took a big hit, as did much of the country, but we didn't rebound from it. You know, we talked about, you know...
Well, those are clearly the numbers we need. Who has rebounded and why? That's... That's.
So there's there's part of the process. We need to understand why we're not rebounding and, you know, like I said, and I don't know if you want to dispute it, but we've been on a 15-year decline in in this marketplace in terms of tourism. You can look at attendance, occupancies, revenues to the city. The evidence is there. We've been declining, and we have not been able to pick ourselves up. And my what I'm seeing is that we are, again, sending sending this money out without without, I don't think, doing the real due diligence and looking at what is our problem.
Well, but the problem is you don't have the counterfactual. You do not know what would have happened to to the tourism industry here without the funding going to Colonial Williamsburg, without the funding going to the Alliance. And we also know that relative to historic tourism nationally, we actually have done better than historic tourism nationally. So so I think, you know, yes, it's not what we want it to be, but to say it's a failure, you know, given.
It's a failure.
But given what's happening in, you know, comparable markets and what have you, it's not clear. And I think, again, it's the problem is it's not just a city issue, it's a historic triangle issue. And I think there are a variety of efforts going on between the Chamber, Historic Tourism, excuse me, the.
Historic Triangle.
Collaborative, WIDE MAC. I mean, there is increasing amounts of information and data that let us better analyze what's what's going on and what we can do better. But it's not clear that any amount of money will change what's happening to historic tourism nationally.
May I offer something? And, Mr. Pons, I don't mean to change your approach, but what if we looked at it a little bit differently? And rather than connecting the tourism funding to whatever study you want to do, we look at the the operating results that we're getting. Are the tax revenues that we receive through the meals tax or the tax revenues we receive through the room tax where we want them to be or where we think they could be? And if they are where we want them to be and they are where we think they could be, then that's the way it is. But if they're lower than that, is it worth looking at what we could do to improve those receipts for the city? And the first step there in my mind, and again, I'm not trying to hijack your point, is we have to determine what the questions are that we want answered. And then, once we come up with the questions, then we need to determine what's the best way to go about getting those answers that will help us make the right decisions going forward. Is that?
No, thank you for for helping. I mean, that succinctly says what what it is I think we need to be doing, identifying where we want to be, however we measure that, and then are we getting there at the right proper pace? And then, you know, how do we affect whatever is effectable, if that's a word, to get us there?
I would agree, and I've said this to each of you in casual conversation. I think we can get in the weeds all day about on intensive parts of our tourism engine, but until we take a look at how the whole thing functions, I'm not comfortable making any, you know, remarkable decisions. I think until I have that solid understanding of where we need to go, you know, 10, 15 years from now, I'm not ready to make any decisions until I have that solid understanding.
Now, is that something that through Phil's office, Phil Serra's office, that we can kind of look at, you know, get the history of where we've been factoring in CPI and other, you know, economic measurables to see where we're at today, where we were 10 years ago, 20 years ago, and somehow project forward to look at, you know, those numbers at different stages to see so that we can we can benchmark results?
I think certainly that that information's available, but it also has to be put in the right context, and the question is, what is the right context to put those numbers in? So I think I think and that's that's a much more difficult question. So I think I think we need to spend some time thinking about that and then proceed.
Just to throw out one other thought, and I'm not suggesting we go this path, but the EDA recently worked with the Business School on a project and where they were very helpful. And, you know, there might be opportunities, similar opportunities, even with getting help with developing, what are the metrics, what are the questions, and not necessarily at this point trying to provide the answers before we know what it is we're really looking for.
In many ways, I feel like this information's out there. We have the Hess report and the Nichols report. I just need some sort of I need it to be distilled down into an entire market analysis so that if and if and when that affects the decisions we make as a council to, you know, better promote ourselves.
Well, and one thing to follow up on is, you know, the Nichols report comes up all the time, but also, you know, a lot of the recommendations in the Nichols report have actually been fulfilled.
Carried through.
Been carried through. So I think it's 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 an ongoing process, and there's no magic bullet to it. But I think we have to keep the question in front of us, and I think Paul's point's exactly right. The real question is, what are the questions? And that's what we need to be spending some time thinking about, which which we will do as the year goes forward. Any further discussion on the budget? I'm sorry, but this this is not appropriate time. At the end of the meeting, we do have a public comment period, and that would be an appropriate time for you to comment. Sorry. Okay. With that, we'll move on to the next item on the budget, which is reports, and the first are monthly financial statements.
Yes, you have the nine-month report through March of this year. The it's interesting to note on page one that, again, our revenues and expenditures are running very, very close to where they were at this time last year. Revenue's up about half a percent, expenditure's down about half a percent, but again, very close. And as always, it's interesting to analyze the room, meal, and sales tax information to see what the trends are there. We are continuing to have better results this year than last year in room tax, meals tax, and sales tax. But again, as we all know, we're we're both on general sales tax and room tax. We're a long way from where we were just a couple of years ago at the in 2008, although meals tax has been holding pretty well and continuing to grow. So happy to answer any questions?
Any questions for for Jack on financial reports?
Just a comment. It's interesting to see how how successful the February soccer tournament was. Previously, in 2009, it had been snowed out in February, and we lost those, you know, 2,000 rooms, and that's about what we we gained here in 2010, or 11 years backwards.
That's the importance of that, you know, sports tourism efforts that the Alliance is pursuing along with with others and the shoulder season efforts are really critical.
If I could just, and one more comment on that, along the lines of what you were just talking about, too. What we've noticed in meal tax is our our market share in that area has continued to stay pretty strong because Williamsburg has continued to to get a lot of new restaurants and hang on to many good ones. On the other hand, in the room tax area, we've lost market share pretty dramatically. So it's partly the whole amount, the whole industry struggling, but it's also the Williamsburg in particular has lost vis-à-vis York County in particular because of all the new product in York County in recent years compared to what we have in the city. So again, it gets back to what is the question? Part of it is general tourism, but part of it is particularly what's happening within the three jurisdictions and how that reflects in our revenues.
And that's the importance of the context for the questions. Monthly department operating reports, anything in particular, Jack?
Just one thing I'd like to point out, under the city manager section, at this month, we added several new performance metrics that correlate to the council's community engagement goal, the number of press releases, the number of people that are signed up to receive e-notify emails from the city on all sorts of activities depending on what they choose, the number of e-notification messages that have been sent out. We're starting now to track attendance at council meetings. We've always known who was here in the minutes in terms of who spoke, but now we're counting folks in the room to get a better sense of who's coming, just the number of people participating in meetings. And so that you'll you'll see in this month's report, and we'll see it in the future. We also note that we've realized a significant cost savings in not printing the budget this year. I'm told by Jerry that it's $865 in not printing all those big budgets. So I'm pretty surprised with that.
Just the budget printing?
Just the budget printing. And finally, also, you'll see in under the city manager section, which includes economic development, that the businesses that have come into the city just in the past month, and the number, about 12 of them, are are named as to the business and the location. So that was encouraging.
Good job, Michelle. Thanks. Thanks for your efforts there. Any questions on the operating reports?
I have a question, but in following up on what Jack just said, I just got an email today from one of the new businesses in that's coming to town, a business I used to patronize before it went out of business or before it closed its location where it was. And now it's moving to the city, and I got this email about how wonderful it's going to be in the city, and it's wonderful it's going to be in High Street. And I assume they sent it to all their customers who are on their email list, so that was that was fun to get.
Next order of business is city manager reports, and this is the proposed budget updates.
Right. Again, we didn't want to confuse this with the budget hearing information, so but Phil will come forward now and and just show you the status of the general fund and sales tax fund with the pluses and minuses. Oops, sorry, Phil. There you go.
Good afternoon, Mayor Holman and members of council. So we'll talk a little bit about the general fund and sales tax fund. There are a few changes in those two funds. First of all, in the general fund, we started with $31.78 million when we began the proposed budget. We're going to have to increase the revenue side for the grantor's tax. The state's up their estimates on grantor's tax. We had a very conservative number in there as a holding place until we heard from the state. So that's good news from the state in that area. And then the 599 funds, there's a reduction of about $13.5 for 599 police funds. So that brings down the total revised revenues to $31,824. On the expenditure side, there's four adjustments, a slight increase for the library, almost $3,800. The regional jail, just a very tiny decline there, almost $1,300. School contribution, if you recall, the school proposed budget had the city's contribution in there at $7.377 million, and we proposed $7.3 million. James City has since come out with their proposed budget, and we would have to add $25,478 to be in sync with the contract with the county with their proposed budget. That number could change depending on county action they will adopt at the end of April. And then the other change would be the local health department contribution. As we were putting the proposed budget together, we were informed by Dr. Trump's office that there was significant state reductions in one of their programs requiring more revenues from the localities that are a member of the local department. So that's a $21,518 increase. So brings the total expenditures to $31,921. So the net effect is we would need almost $98,000 from surplus. If you recall, we started out at about an $88,000 transfer in from surplus, so it's up about $10,000 more than when we originally started. And of course, Mr. Tuttle and I will revisit the EDA numbers. There's a few other things we're still looking at also, and we'll get back and give an update on the general fund and the utility, sales tax fund at next month's work session, and then you'll read on the budget at the Thursday council meeting next month. One change in the sales tax fund, we had $450,000 as a city contribution toward the capital projects for the schools. And this number, bringing it down by $272,000, would bring that into sync with the county's proposed funding for capital projects. So and that the difference there for that whole fund would be a transfer in from reserves of about $595,000. There are no changes in the utility fund or the public assistance fund at this point?
Great. The and the general fund, the last couple of years, we've had budgeted transfers from surplus as well. Have we actually had to make those transfers from surplus?
Not that I'm aware of. No, I don't think we've made a transfer yet.
No. Again, if to the extent we're able to outperform the budget, both on revenue expenditure side, the surp the projected transfer from surplus has turned into a transfer to surplus.
To surplus, yeah. So so that this is not out of line with what what we've done, particularly in the last few years, but in reality, at the end of the budget year, we've always been able to transfer to surplus.
Yeah, it's 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 a way of dealing with that balanced budgeting as opposed to simply pushing something one way or another in revenues expenditure to balance.
Right.
This is just a more direct way of seeing what we're really doing.
Any questions?
Just one question. Mr. Serra, how does this net effect total transfer for surplus in the general fund compare to what was budgeted in prior years? Is it is it usually around $100,000? Is it more? Is it less?
Last year, we had a balanced budget. The year before, we were off a little bit, $128,000, I believe.
Yeah, I think it's it's been in the range. It's been as high as a couple of hundred thousand. It's been as low as zero, which was one last year. It just sort of worked out that way. We were so close to zero. But this is probably mid-range from what we've done in the past.
Thank you.
Scott, do you have any?
Yeah, thank you. I have every reason to believe that, you know, through prudent management, that we won't have to dip into surplus and we'll be able to to make the numbers work. But if we had a zero-based budget, meaning we couldn't dip into reserves, it would mean we'd have to find cuts somewhere else.
Yeah, if exactly. If there were, either by policy or if there were no reserves, then then, yes, exactly, you would. And and we would need to budget, if we were budgeting on that basis, we would have to go in and find either cuts or or estimate revenues higher than we're really comfortable with to make it balance.
I mean, in part, this budget does two things. One, our budget philosophy does two things. One is it it's very conservative in estimating revenues.
Well, I'd say it it used to be very conservative. Now it's just conservative.
Just conservative, okay. It's conservative, but also the efficiencies in in operating have have people usually come in under budget.
Right. Well, and again, since I've been on council, and even before that, I was very, very firm in the belief that that city manager and staff did a great job, you know, making sure that the expenses were tight and, you know, we don't have a $500 hammer somewhere. But and I'm not proposing we change anything, just just as it gets philosophical thing. If we didn't have that line item from the transfer from reserves and we had to dig into expenses a little bit more, maybe there's an opportunity. But but maybe we would have to look at our revenue, and maybe we'd be more aggressive with driving results with our with our tax collections through sales. Just, you know, I throw that out because it goes back to what I've been talking about in tourism. No other questions or comments?
Judy? Okay. Thank you, Phil. This is will be an ongoing discussion, and hopefully we'll move toward budget adoption in May, but there's still some ways to go.
Right.
Next item is city attorney reports. Do we have none? The next order of business is unfinished business, and this is rental of rooms to rumors with administrative approval. And I believe we have a memo from.
Well.
Are we have have a recommend- We have a recommendation of a memo from staff.
A memo that you would send us bear to the Planning Commission, ask them to look at this issue, and so we tried to craft something that was pretty broad.
Has everyone had a chance to look at this, Scott? Since you brought this up initially, does this meet your
Very sad fact.
Do you think this gives sufficient guidance to Planning Commission about sort of what
I think so, because it lays out a spectrum for the discussion to take place, you know, fairly conservative, fairly liberal to something in the middle. And that will allow them to look at all the different contingencies of the best and worst case scenarios in each situation. I think frames the discussion very well.
We have two former chair of the Planning Commission, planning commissioners. So if you guys, if you were on Planning Commission, does this sort of, you know, is this sufficient information? What would you do? Add anything or what do you think would help Planning Commission?
I think this is the route we should go. As I mentioned Monday, what I think we should avoid is getting too far down the path, telling Planning Commission what we want them to consider that we're going to do anyway. Because it defeats the purpose of the process. And this gives them ample opportunities, as Mr. Foster mentioned, to discuss all the ramifications of the different scenarios, weigh the pros and cons, come up with their own independent evaluation and give us material to work with where we will then come up with our independent evaluation, but informed by their discussion.
I would agree. I think knowing the members as I do, I think they'll have a good time with this and be very thoughtful with their outcome.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so is, do you need a motion from council or just a sense of council that we wish to forward this to the Planning Commission?
Well, as long as you sign it, it goes. However you want it, you could have by motion or you could simply by consensus.
Are you, with consensus that this be sent to Planning Commission?
I actually think it would be better if you, someone made a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that council authorize you to send this letter to the Planning Commission on our behalf.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Newton?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Frye?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
You just earned your money, Chris. Thank you very much.
You've got the clock.
Keep us online. Okay. That brings us to new business and a couple of things under new business. One, I'd like to remind everyone that Williamsburg has issued a friendly challenge to city residents to be green. The city's green team, made up of employees from all the departments, received a platinum award in the 2010 Virginia Municipal League Green Government Challenge and decided to create their own friendly challenges. Last fall, 17 Williamsburg businesses took the city's first green business challenge. Now we want to recognize our residents committed to a greener quality of life and inspire everyone to take the challenge as well. You must be a city resident to participate. All you have to do is fill out a simple form, checking off a variety of green actions you've taken in areas like water conservation and waste reduction. Applicants will be included in a random drawing for one of five recycling bins with wheels and lids, full of green items from the city and our green businesses. The deadline is 4:30 PM on Earth Day, April 22, 2011. You can get the application at our website at WilliamsburgVA.gov/GreenChallenge or you can also call 757-220-6140 for more information. And we would encourage everyone in the city to participate, all the residents to participate in the Green Challenge.
That leads me to something that came up at yesterday's EDA meeting where the, as I mentioned previously, the students from the Mason School of Business helped the EDA by undertaking a sustainability survey of local businesses. And interestingly, one of the things they found from the survey results was that many of the local businesses, even those who were participating in the survey, were not aware of the city's Green Challenge. And the school, business school students then went looking through the city's website to find the information. They reported to the EDA that they found it in their perspective somewhat hidden on the city's website. So I just wonder if it'd be worth asking staff to look at how we, you know, I know the placement of content on websites is very complicated and all sorts of issues, but if we could look at how we get people to that point or if we have the right information in the right place, I think that would be helpful to our local businesses and to the residents and to the city at large.
Yeah, and I think these Green Challenges will go forward too, so that it will become an annual process. So again, as we think about it, I think we, that's, thank you, that's a useful thought night. Jody, will you communicate with the green team?
Yes.
Okay. And again, I would encourage residents to participate in the Green Challenge that's coming up. And again, that due date is on Earth Day and also I'll remind you that Historic Triangle Earth Day is going to be celebrated Friday, April 22 at 10:30 at the Historic Freight Shed at Riverwalk Landing in Yorktown. And again, it's an event for the public and I hope lots of people will participate in that. Okay. Any other new business to come before council?
I think it's worth mentioning, Mayor Mary announced today that they're going to, in the fall, by the fall of 2013, have constructed a new fraternity complex that includes 187 new rooms at 17 beds each, making 11 standalone units. It'll be located along Ucrop Drive and Yates Drive.
Yeah, that's terrific news, I think, for, you know, the college has made a commitment to increase student housing on campus and this is one measure of their efforts to do that. So thank you, Scott. Any other new business? If not, that brings us to our final agenda item for the day and that's open forum. This is a time when anyone who wishes to address council on any issue may come forward. If you wish to do so, please come forward and state your name and address.
My name is General Ekso. I live at 127 Bannaker Drive. Actually, I came here to ask for permission for use of the city seal. Mr. Pons was saying earlier and I heard everything he was saying, it was most people don't realize that Williamsburg is the first city in what we now know as the United States of America. People come here all the time, but they don't realize that this is the first city. Explaining that to them, it makes people go, oh, I understand it. As far as tourism, people come here all year. I believe this is the second most visited tourist spot besides Disney World. It's a lot of people, but they don't know where they are. And I made a, I had a T-shirt company and I took the city seal, I put the word city number one over the top, which is Williamsburg, Virginia's first city, city number one. And the city seal. And I put these on some T-shirts. I haven't sold any yet, but I put them on T-shirts and I got people actually going crazy. They're knocking me down. They want to get the T-shirts. Also and, excuse me for one second. I don't actually have a speech. I was going to sit in the back and just watch for a little while and I wasn't going to say anything and I was going to come back next month, but then when you started talking about it and I was like, the reason why, you know, I feel like the tourism, if you're saying it's going down, people don't know where they are. When they realize where they are, then it all makes sense to them because they go, oh, we're here in Williamsburg and we go and we visit the boat and we go over to Colonial Williamsburg and we do this, we do that. But they don't really understand the history of exactly where they are. In the history books, they talk about Jamestown, they talk about Yorktown, but Williamsburg is kind of just, they don't really talk about it. So once they realize where they are, the, you know, the implications of that is just so big, it changes the whole thing. If you're driving by and you see the historical triangle sign, if over the top of that it says city number one or something of that, the home of the birthplace of America, people go, oh, this is the first city. Wow. Then it makes more sense to them. I'm from California. I've been here for 12 years. I didn't realize until I was here for like two or three years and it hit me like a brick. It was like, oh, wow, this is like the first city in America. And from that point, I just started designing logos. Started out in 2006, 2005 and someone told me that I needed to come and get permission from the city council in order to use the seal for a T-shirt.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Tuttle, do we have a process for that?
Right. We appreciate, we certainly be happy to discuss that. We love the entrepreneurial spirit and we do have, the city's seal is trademarked and does require a license for its use and obviously there are issues that have to be looked at very carefully with regard to use of the city seal, but we like to have Williamsburg promoted, so.
I love this city. I'm from California. When I moved here, all of my family, my wife, my kids, they're all born here. I have four kids, they're all born here. Since being here, I'm a homeschool teacher. I've learned so much about Williamsburg in itself that now when I tell people, even the people that live here, they're kind of like, I didn't know that. Like, yeah, you didn't know that? It's the first city, so.
Well, thank you very much and if you'll contact the city manager's office, they will help you with whatever processes need to be.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much for coming. Yes.
Hi, Randy O'Neill, Williamsburg, Virginia, 109 Sheffield Road, James City County. It was interesting that the schools were here today and you all were commending them on their efforts. And I'm here on behalf of my business and how difficult it is to try and work with the schools here. Recently, James City County received a PEP grant, you probably saw that in the newspaper, $1.2 million. Sadly, going through the verbiage and the economics of it, you see how few children are affected and most of this is planning and training and payroll. Very little is spent on the equipment. When it's $1.2 million and you have less than 10% on the equipment, that seems unreasonable because that's what the children are going to use. And then I've also learned that with the Williamsburg Health Foundation, they're going to focus on staff health this next grant cycle. So they spent three and a half million dollars on student health and they reached 3,500 kids over three years. So I can only imagine what it's going to be for the adult population and 1,600 employees. Now, when you talk about compensation, the director of this PEP grant, who has been in the school division here for a number of years, is going to earn 50% of a salary of That's for 40 weeks, six hours a day. But she's going to get half of that, so she has to work two and a half days to earn $47,725. Just to give you an idea of how many children I could serve and the outcomes that I could have with that, we're talking close to 42,000 children for that $47,000. So when you talk about green enterprise, saving money from the government side is what we're talking about. Green enterprise. So if you do away with that Jamestown gym, that's 4.2 million, okay? I've been operating for the last six and a half years. I have 320 square feet. I could have been training those children. I take 360 to 420 kids a day for 600 bucks. Recently, in the newspaper, you've seen the Bookmobile in Newport News, $120,000 to operate that. They visit 15,000 people. Just to benchmark you, my mobile health centers, working 180 school days, can, at $108,000, can serve 64,000 children for $12,000 less. So what we need is social entrepreneurs who think green, but not in turning off the lights, saving real money. So if you do away with that gym, 4 million, you do away with that ship program, 3.5 million for 3,500 kids. Holy cow. That's like close to 100 years you could have hired me and I would have taken 65,000 kids a year for 100 years. I mean, when you guys are talking green and saving money and then you're patting everybody on the back, 1.2 million. There's a wonderful narrative, but not one outcome. They're not going to tell me who that kid is, what metabolic rate they're going to work out at, what workout they're going to do to reach a metabolic rate, whether it's going to be aerobic, anaerobic. None of that information is available. They're applying all this software, but you know, unless you level the playing field, you're going to have an athletic kid and then you're going to have a kid that's left out. Sadly, that's 75%. And I'm really glad that you're interested in, you know, promoting athletics, but remember, you don't play sports to become an athlete. Athletes play sports, okay? The doctor is not telling anybody to go home, eat right and play football, or eat right and go play soccer, or eat right and do karate. They're saying, go home, eat right, exercise. Do it as safely as you can and establish the best routine for yourself. So when you think green and you think about economics and entrepreneurial, okay, you've got to think about people who can make a dent in your big budget items. Now, the federal government's got 1.2 million to pay a whole lot of teachers to go to some training with no outcome for our kids. There's nothing in here for that. So another thing with me, this is all federal money and being a SWAM certified business, I feel like I have been kept from bidding on these funds. I don't think they're following the RFPs or invitation for bid. I don't think they're doing that. They didn't even know what a SWAM certified business was when I called their procurement office. And I've been working in the schools for six years and I've been demanding that when they spend these capital investments on equipment and the like, that they'd let businesses like mine, other than their historic friendly, the businesses they've been friendly with. You know, how about a little competition? Thank you so much. And I think Williamsburg's the best town in the country and I think with your arts program, you might want to get some artists into some of our hotels, in the lobbies right now. That might be a start. Encourage them to come to Williamsburg, get in the lobby, start painting, engage people about our arts district. I'm not, you know, a big fan of that for economic development, but we need to exploit it if we're going to have it. So I would start encouraging artists to go into the hotel lobbies, start painting, hang there local art everywhere in town. And also I have some family money that I'm interested in investing. So you've got some opportunities. I'm interested in listening. Right now, I'm considering on buying hot store out in Charles City. It's a gas station and a campground. I got the cash for it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to address city council on any matter? If not, I think that brings us to the end of our regular business. I think we might have closed session issues.
Why, yes, we do. Mr. Mayor, I move to go into closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia for the purpose of discussing one personnel matter per sub-paragraph one concerning appointments to boards and commissions.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newton?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Frye?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
We'll take a five-minute recess.